Thank you for getting the recording up and operating.
Uh.
Commissioners.
Now and uh the recording's good.
YouTube is going now?
Yep.
Thank you so much. We're a little less than a minute out. If my clock is serving me well. Since the recording is already going. It is now one thirty, so I will welcome everybody. This is the Planning Commission for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'm gonna start with a sound check for our commissioners. Uh Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick. Present, thank you. Uh Commissioner Gammy. Commissioner Maza. Commissioner O'Neil. Commissioner Cantania.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz.
Present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu.
Present.
All right. Thank you so much. Well, good afternoon and good day, beautiful people. We are starting today with the briefing portion of the Planning Commission meeting. Uh this is a little bit hybrid and I am not in person today as well. Uh but these are preliminary presentations that we'll hear during the briefing. There is no public testimony after the briefing. It'll be time for commissioners to ask questions. And uh then the briefing item will come back. So I'm gonna read through the briefing agenda today, which is just one item, and that is agenda item uh BDA dash two thousand and twenty-four dash zero seven eight six three at forty-seven twenty, Fifth Avenue. This happens to be new construction of Central Catholic Student Center and located in the Squirrel Hill North neighborhood. Presenting that here this afternoon will be Mr. Frager.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Project Development Plan Application BDA two thousand and twenty-four zero seven eight six three. It was filed by HDG Architects on behalf of Central Catholic High School for the construction of a new student center to replace the existing campus gymnasium. The project requires review as a project development plan per the U standards um in the zoning code for recreation and entertainment indoor general use. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing campus gymnasium and replace it with a new three-story one hundred and two square foot, one hundred and two thousand square foot student center. The new student center would be within the general footprint of the existing building and a portion of the existing surface parking lot on the site. The building will house a gymnasium and other athletic spaces on the first floor and will include classrooms, a kitchen, and cafeteria on the third floor. A second-floor accessory balcony will run the southeastern facade facing the football field, and a pedestrian bridge will span the parking lot from the student center to the main campus area. The project is located in the EMI District. There is an existing institutional master plan for the site that has been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. City planning staff have determined that the proposal is compliant with the institutional master plan. There will be ground-level parking at uh a ground-level parking garage accessed off of South Neville Street for a total of seventy-two parking spaces, contributing to a net increase in parking on the site from two hundred to two fourteen spaces. The twenty bike parking spaces provided within the existing quadrangle for the campus will remain. Additional bike parking is not proposed as part of the student center use. A development activities meeting was held with the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition and the Oakland Business Improvement District, as well as Oakland Planning and Development Corporation on March ten, two thousand and twenty-five. A copy of the DAM report is attached to your briefing materials. The project was reviewed as a special exception by the Zoning Board of Adjustment. A copy of the ZBA decision will be included in the hearing report when it is issued. The project was reviewed by Staff Design Review and by the Contextual Design Advisory Panel. The panel commented favorably on the massing in relation to the campus and other architectural features. The panel provided recommendations for materials, landscaping, and integrating the pedestrian bridge with the building. A copy of the CDAP summary is attached to this or attached to your report. A construction management plan has been reviewed and approved by City Planning and by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team for the presentation.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Smith from HDG Architects. Matt Stossel, President of Central Catholic High School is also with me. I'll be handling most of the presentation. Um if we get any questions or anything that are relevant for Matt, he can come up and and give you guys his answers. So with that, if you wanna, oh, great. Go to the next slide. Let me see it that way. If you wanna go back just once, go ahead. Is there a delay? It's stuck on that. Go back one slide. There we go. Alright. This was in the the packet of information we provided. I think Joe hit on almost everything on here, so we can kinda skip past this slide.
I I apologize, or we're not hearing you online, or at least I am not. Is anyone else having any difficulty hearing?
I don't, I'm not hearing.
No, I'm not hearing either.
Okay, maybe I need to re-
Can you try again? Do you hear us now?
We can, I can hear you. Can can we all hear?
Yeah.
We can hear now.
Yep, we can hear now.
Can everyone hear me on the microphone at the podium?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Alright, so we can kinda, we can skip past this slide as well, since Joe touched on a lot of this. Um just real quick on who Central Catholic High School is. It's a all-boys college preparatory Catholic high school. Um and it's was founded in nineteen twenty-seven, so they've been there um for almost a hundred years now. You wanna go to the next slide? Um this is a little bit of the history of the campus. The new building that we are going to discuss, we we spent a lot of effort trying to make sure that it fit in with the the architecture of the campus. Can you, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear. Can you hear, LaShawn?
I can hear.
I can hear too, also.
Oh, my internet connection is unstable. I'm sorry. It's my fault.
Keep going.
No worries.
Okay. Alright, so um like I was saying, this is uh a just summary slide to show you the history of the campus. The main building there at the top of the page was built in nineteen twenty-seven along with shortly thereafter the Brothers Residence Building um that was built as soon as the main building opened. Um in nineteen seventy-eight, they built the what what is called Alumni Hall, which is the gym building that we are gonna refer to, where that um gymnasium building is kind of on the bottom of the site is where the new student center will get located. That will be the building that that is going to be demolished. Um in two thousand, they put the turf field. They constructed that turf field. And then in two thousand and sixteen, they is their newest building on campus. It's the STEM building where you can see a image of it on the bottom left there. And if we go to the next slide here, this is an aerial view with the main building kind of in front of us. Fifth Avenue at the bottom of the screen there, um turf field at the top. Uh you can kinda see Carnegie Mellon Campus in the distance there at the top of the page. Neville Street is on the right side there where you can see the STEM building and the gym building. Working now? Okay. Alright, so this, we we put this slide in here just to show you some up-close images of the existing buildings' architecture that we are going to incorporate into the new building. Um you can kinda, you can see the pitched roof, the the um church-like feel of some of these buildings. Um you can see on that main building image on the bottom right there, the pitched roof with a cross emblem in it. You can also see some of the the cast stone detailing at the windows with the curved windows. Um the it's it's a little bit difficult to see on these images, but a lot of the intricate brickwork detailing, we added some brick detailing to try to mimic some of the things happening over here at the at their existing buildings. Um also on the top right is the is an image of their existing quadrangle area. Um when we look at the site plan, you'll see this is where we are going to tie in a new pedestrian bridge so that the students, when they leave that main building at the top of the page, don't have to walk through the parking lot to get over to the new building. Alright, site plan. Uh this is our proposed site plan. Again, orienting everybody, Fifth Avenue is at the top of the page. Neville Street's on that, on the left side of the page. Um you can see the the gym gymnasium building there is dashed inside that red uh new student center block. So the new student center is is larger than the existing gym, but is meant to be uh constructed in a similar location as the existing gym. Uh there will be a parking garage entrance off of Neville Street. Uh that entrance, because of the slope of Neville Street, will allow us to park um really almost in a a whole story below the turf field. So the first floor of the building will be up at the turf field level. The parking garage would be below that. So on three sides, the garage will be underground. Um I also wanna point out at the kind of at the top right corner of the new building, you can you can see a um uh in in kinda the light-colored pink there is where the pedestrian bridge would connect from the new student center building over to the existing quadrangle. Um that pedestrian bridge would connect to the second floor of the new student center building. Alright, this is just to try to help you guys or picture what's going on in this building. This is the garage level floor plan. This, we kinda turn the building um in plan here. Where Neville Street's on the left side at a diagonal. The garage would have seventy-two parking spaces. Um I think as Joe mentioned earlier. Um above the garage level is the main level of the gymnasium in the middle there in yellow. In blue, surrounding the gymnasium are locker rooms that have access directly to the turf field and then across the hall over into the gymnasium. Um a wrestling room is also provided at the top of the page there. Uh the second floor plan, you're looking now down into the gymnasium. Um there, on the right side of the plan, is where the students would would students or spectators, if they're coming into this building, would come across the bridge on the right side and into the main lobby area. Um they would walk into the gymnasium and walk down to their seats. And then beyond the gymnasium is a weight and fitness room on the left side of the page there. There's also some administrative offices on the, in purple there on the bottom right. And as Joe mentioned earlier, there is a um spectator deck that will wrap this this floor level to allow um spectators to watch events going on on the turf field. Third floor, um this, on the bottom right of this this floor plan is the commons area, which will also be their cafeteria. We're relocating their existing cafeteria from the basement of the main building and and moving it over to here where they'll, so they'll have a full-service kitchen, serving area, and cafeteria. Um at the top of the page, there are a, there is a lecture classroom and an additional classroom. And then at the bottom of the page, there are some some more administrative offices that have been consolidated into one location. Alright, so this is a rendering here as if you are um standing at all, at the corner of Neville Street, looking into their campus. Um you can kind of at the back of that, where that bus is on the right side is where the parking garage entrance would be halfway up the hill there on Neville Street. Um so a couple of things to point out here on this rendering. You can see we um were mimicking some of that that pitched roof that we saw on the main building images earlier. Uh we also have that cross um in in the brickwork there. We also incorporated um cast stone around the windows beyond, cast stone um at the top of uh the second floor area with um and then we have on the third floor, you can see some of those, the curved windows. We in incorporated a different brick color there up on the third floor to help break up the mass of the building, so it wasn't just completely all um a red brick building. Um I go into the next slide. We just have, you can also see the pedestrian bridge there on the left side of the page uh in the distance. This is a rendering as if you are looking from the quadrangle at the building where you could be walking across that bridge or um right into the second floor entrance. Um all those areas that are kinda pulled out with the pitched roof, those are um are stair towers. Uh at least in this view, and on the last view, there are stair tower. Um this is a view as if you were on the turf field, looking up at the building, where you can also see that spectator deck wrapping the second floor. Um the tall windows on the second floor of the building there, look into the, are are windows from the gymnasium. And then the third floor, we pushed in there, the at the curved windows. That's where the cafeteria would be up, looking out at the turf field and the rest of campus. Just another view from the other side of the turf field, looking into, on the left side of the page is the fitness room. That carries over as you go to the right into the gymnasium. One of the things you can kinda see on this image is that we took, we we do not have a third floor above the left side of the building. We pushed the third floor into into campus as much as we could there, so that when we got to this view, where you're standing on Neville Street, looking up at the building, the building doesn't seem as tall because you can't actually see the third floor. It's pushed, recessed in there, um pushed back. So uh a couple of other things we did here for the view on Neville Street is just incorporated some of that um brick detailing that you can see over in the main building there with the diamond uh diamond brick pattern, so it's not just a plain uh red brick wall. We put glass where it fit with the program on the inside of the building. You can see on the right side where there's a fitness room. We do have some glass there. And then just just beyond, just in the distance there next to that bump-out area, uh we also have uh two-story glass there to help break that up some. Uh this slide just shows you here what we are thinking for materials. At the base of the building will be split-face CMU. Um then you have, you also have cast stone, as you can see around around windows, two different types of brick. And then um the uh anodized aluminum storefront system. Uh Joe touched on this briefly, but um we, by and the reason that we have incorporated a parking garage is because we did not want to have any less parking than they have today on campus. Um so the parking garage is meant to replace what we had to take up by build, by having a larger building than what they have today. Um we also had a transportation analysis done while we were uh working through the institutional master plan that would, that's going to be applied to this project as well. Um and basically, the, there is no intention to increase students with this project. It's really just to maintain enrollment. Um so the study really found that there's no impact transportation as there's really no anticipation of additional um day-to-day uh occupants on campus. Uh this was just a copy of the transportation memo that was approved by DOMI. And that's, that's it. That's our presentation for today.
Well, thank you so much for a thorough presentation. Um at this time, we don't have any public testimony, but commissioners, uh questions or comments as it relates to this application, now is our time. Do we have some questions, commissioners?
I could just make a comment. I just wanna say that this looks great. I've been on this campus many times and have always thought of like there was such a lack of use of space. And so this just really brings another another face to that building and to that area. And so, very well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. Any additional comments, Commissioner Cantania?
Yes, I, good, uh good afternoon. Um I have a quick question about the facade. Can we go back to the slides that have the facade, please?
I think I have, oh.
Okay, well, that one is fine. Um it's, I don't, it's, so there seems to be a triangle, right? Does that's like a parapet on the side of of facing that Neville?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a roof behind that? Uh is it a pitched roof also, or?
Um there is a, there is a pitched roof, but we pulled it down, so we didn't have as much um. It's it's a much uh
Lower pitch.
Lower pitch. We we wanted to, we wanted to have that pitched appearance when you're looking at it from Neville Street with without having maybe the cost of a fully pitched roof going the whole way back over the roof. So we lowered the pitch and it's really just um it it's it's really just lowered, more or less. Yeah.
It's just that, to me, that wall, the way it sticks out, it feels like it could almost like fall over if the wind comes in too strong, you know? Because it's almost like a freestanding wall. And it almost feels like it needs to, it needs to react to the pitch of the actual roof versus being something much higher. Because normally, when you see something like that from the street, you imagine that there's a pitched roof behind that, and you're not, right? So
Yeah, I mean.
Maybe bring that down so that it reflects what you're doing with the roof will be um one comment.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? You understand?
I understand what you're saying, yes. I mean, but but that's kind of the, that's kind of the idea, right? So that it looks like it is pitched. We want, because that's kind of the same
Yeah.
Pitch as the main building that we were trying to match. Um but I will definitely have us, you know, review it with a structural engineer, make sure there's no concern there.
Yeah, just something to think about. It's just so that it's, it's a, the wall is truthful to what it is, which is a wall that is actually protecting the roof, right?
Yeah.
And so the pitch should actually match the roof uh that you have. The other question is, I know there's an issue obviously with costings, but um you're not gonna have students come through that bridge. Is that bridge gonna have some sort of cover so that in the winter, they don't have to worry about snow?
Yeah, we, that was something we debated about. We priced it out and ended up with no cover on it. We started out that way a little bit, but it ended up being a a cost sacrifice that we did with the bridge. Yes.
Okay. And then my last question is, I understand that you're trying to make it so that it doesn't feel like it's this massive building. But at the same time, if you, I don't know who has control over, but if you go to the slide that has the view from from the playing field.
I can't, I can't go back.
Up there. Well, I'll go to the, uh there's another view, right? More frontal, I think. Yeah, there we go. Um it almost, that almost feels like it's three buildings. Um and almost like the three buildings are competing. And because of a lot of the detail that you have on the on the break, right? On on the on the more taller massing, um it feels to me like there's a lot of stuff that's happening, like too come, too much into the building. So um, you know, I know that you're trying to make it so that it doesn't look very massive, but at the same time, it looks very busy. And so it's just something for you guys to think about.
Okay.
As you go along. Um and because otherwise, it's a really, it's a really um, it's a, it's a very elegant, I think, massing. But I think that it's just doing too much, maybe, that it's detracting from it.
Okay.
So just a thought.
Um I actually like what you did with the um massing there to kinda split into, you know, uh different uh almost different buildings, it looks like. I I think uh, you know, it does reduce the mass of it. And um uh two slides ahead, I I like what you uh did with the back of the building too, to kinda set back that third floor. So it's uh it's not, you know, uh you don't really see as much mass uh there, especially, you know, if there's not gonna be windows on that side. So yeah, I I I like what you did there. Um the pedestrian bridge, um when it goes to the other side uh to the quadrangle, is that the staircase there? Or is it like ADA accessible, is it a ramp?
Let me go back to, can, let me just see if I can get back to the site plan.
You mean where it connects to the current campus?
So um there are stairs to the to the right of the bridge. Um there is, if you can, it's kinda hard to see, but there is a long ramp already there today to the left of the bridge. Um it's this long, yeah, right to the left, left, along along the parking lot. And then it kinda, it goes up from the STEM building up towards the bridge. There is an ADA ramp there to get you up there.
Gotcha.
But in the end, I think the plan is if if you have an event after hours, that they would allow um handicap-accessible entrance, either if you're already in the garage, there's handicap parking in there. If you're coming off the street level, they would allow you to come in on the first floor, use the elevator to go up. Um they're just gonna try to encourage people who are, who can, to use the bridge to to come in for that kinda game-day feel of entering the building.
Yep. And you said it's uh uncovered on the the top, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, sorry, one last question. Do you have a parking for students or do students they bike to school?
Um Matt, you wanna answer that one?
Yes, students and faculty and staff all use the lot. Uh the lot that's under the building on school days would be faculty-staff parking. And the service area will be for students. And then we have uh arrangements and agreements between CMU and also the church across the street that we use during the day for school parking.
Okay, so and then on the underneath of the new garage, are you gonna have also bike parking for them, or?
All of our bike parking right now is actually in the quadrangle, so the students come down, Husway. And we have bike racks there in the quad, so that's where the the students, if they're riding bikes.
Oh, I see.
Uh or actually, we do have a faculty member that uh he rides his bike to school.
Yeah.
The the thought was that students could go to the main building at the beginning of the day. That's, and they leave from the main building at the end of the day. So having bike racks over at the student center doesn't really, it's not, it's not where they're coming from or going to on on a day-to-day school experience.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate you answering those questions. Are there any other comments? Uh if hearing none, we wanna thank you again for the presentation today, and we'll see you back in two.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Enjoy the remainder of your day. Okay, uh commissioners, it looks like we've got about three minutes before our um other portion of our agenda for today starts. Uh we can go ahead and give a three-minute break if you'd like uh to use the restroom real quick, and we'll come back at two o'clock sharp. Um if that's okay. I see a hand raised here. No. Maybe not. Okay, uh then we're two minutes now, so maybe we, maybe we won't go. Does anybody need a break? Okay, Commissioner Ruiz? Okay, Commissioner Ruiz. All right. All right, we're about one minute to start. We are at exactly two o'clock. Very good, Commissioner Ruiz. Great timing. Okay, all the cameras are on. I know that you're here, the court reporter. Hello there. I see that you are present.
I am present.
Excellent. Welcome and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
So you're welcome. So we are two o'clock sharp. So welcome, everyone. This is the hearing and action portion of the planning commission meeting for May twentieth, twenty twenty five. We want to let you know that hearing and action is the part of the planning commission where we hear applications and we take vote. We have public testimony and then we will vote. I'm going to do some roll call just to see what commissioners are here with us today. Commissioner Blackwell. All right, Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Gammie. All right. I know that Commissioner Mazza will not be here. Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia.
Here.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Thank you again, and Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Thank you, thank you. All right, well, I'm going to read through the agenda. And the agenda for May twentieth, twenty twenty five is as follows. Agenda item A is approval of minutes. Agenda item B is correspondence. Agenda item C is plan of lots. Agenda item D is hearing and action. Under hearing and action, we have four items today. Those I'll read as we get closer to them. And then agenda item E, we have the director's report. Moving up to agenda item A, which is approval of minutes. Commissioners, knowing that you have read, if there are no edits, could we please have a motion from the floor?
To move.
All right, I have a move. Do I have a second, Commissioner Dick? Very good. Thank you. I'll do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
I abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Moving on to agenda item B, which is correspondence before us today for May twenty, twenty twenty five regarding item D, C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero three seven zero at thirteen thirty four Fifth Avenue, we are in receipt of correspondence from Michaela Scheichler and Dr. Brittany McDonald Pierce. Moving on to agenda item C is plan of lots. We have one item under plan of lots, and that is as follows. D C P dash lot dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero one two six located at three twenty nine East Warrington Avenue. This is a major consolidation in the Belsuver neighborhood. Presenting that here today is Mr. Shepke.
Thank you. This is the Warrington Rec Center consolidation plan. It's the proposed consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot one would have four hundred feet of frontage on East Warrington Avenue. It would be eighty four thousand seven hundred square feet in area. Recreation Center is located on the subject property and the recommended motion is to preliminarily approve the Warrington Rec Center consolidation plan and schedule final review on June third, twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Regarding item number one before us today, there is a preliminary approval. Is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding this item? Looks like, do I see a hand raised for that? All right. Do we have a motion to approve preliminarily and a final for June third, twenty twenty five? Do you have a motion? That's from Commissioner Dick motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ruiz. All right, Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Cantonia.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Aye. It looks like it looks like Commissioner O'Neill froze when you called her name.
Exactly. And I was going to go back to her. Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Commissioner O'Neill, you had froze.
Might have missed that a hand was raised. Oh, sorry, it might be in or in, sorry.
Oh, God. I voted aye, but go right ahead. Sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Kryeski, I apologize. I kind of spoke over you there real quick. Did you make comment? I'm sorry.
Oh, is we're playing a lot, sorry. There was a hand raised. I I must have missed that. I'm sorry.
Okay, is the hand still raised?
It looks like they lowered their hand now.
All right, sounds fair and reasonable. Then I'll move forward. Thank you so much. Now we're going to move forward to agenda item D. Under agenda item D, which is hearing and action. Again, there are four items. I'm going to read through all of them. Agenda item one, D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero three seven zero thirteen thirty four Fifth Avenue. This is a demolition, demolish the existing three-story brick structure. Hearing and action item two is D C P dash M P Z C dash twenty twenty five dash zero 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 four nine at Forbes Avenue. This is to amend Duquesne University Institutional Master Plan, I M P in the bluff. Item number three, under hearing and action, is B D A dash twenty twenty five dash zero one nine eight two at nine oh one Liberty Avenue. This is interior and exterior renovations for change of use to a multi-unit residential in the Central Business District. Item number four, B D A dash twenty twenty five dash zero three four seven three at five hundred Ross Street. This is the install of business identification high wall signs in the Central Business District. Moving back to agenda item one, D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero three seven zero at thirteen thirty four Fifth Avenue. Presenting that this afternoon is Ms. Meridian.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. The project is filed, the application D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero three seven zero by Mini Field Demolition Service LLC on behalf of the property owner for the demolish of existing three-story brick structure along Fifth Avenue in the Uptown neighborhood. Per section nine oh eight point oh one point if, it shall be considered a project development plan and require approval through the planning commission. Under the D C P dash L O T dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero six six two application, the proposed parcel two dash G dash fifty one is consolidated with three lots and subdivided into a five-foot wide lot to parallel Fifth Avenue on November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four and attach to this report. Per section nine oh eight point oh four point C point two point B, the proposal P D P is filed for building demolition not part of an application for new construction. So it shall include a report, study, or statement of property's future use that meets the review criteria of section nine two two point ten point E point two. The applicant intends to use the consolidate parcel to expand existing parking lot. There is a certificate of occupancy for that. This parking lot expansion would not comply with the zoning code and recommends that the applicant pursue a development that complies with the code or file an application for the parking lot expansion to be considered by the zoning board of adjustment for variance as needed. On October twenty first, twenty twenty four, the RCOs for the Uptown Neighborhood review the demolish on removal of the brick structure. At the dam, the applicant said, we are not sure if they will do office, mixed use, or housing. But we know that the building is poor condition and needs to be calmed down. We believe that pieces of this lot together make for an attractive development site in the future. A copy of the dam report is attached. On May nine, twenty twenty five, the Department of City Planning Assistant Director prepare a plan compliance letter, which is required for the property with the Uptown Public Eco Innovation District. The letter finds that the statement regarding future use of this site under this application not its conformance with the Uptown Eco Innovation. Plan and recommends that the development team explore alternatives that are clear, consistent with the vision and goals of the community as expressed in the plan. It's attached to the report. The Uptown Eco Innovation Plan was adopted by the planning commission on September twelfth, twenty seventeen. Criteria L of the review criteria for project development plan state that the proposal must address the project conformance with any adopted master plan. The Department of Pyramid License and Inspection found the significant separation of the bricks on the front of the building. It appears to be created an unsafe condition in which violation notices were sent out. Also, on July eighteen, twenty twenty four, under C F dash P L I dash twenty twenty four dash O three five two two five applications, the P L I department found that the building needs to be repaired or removed from that situation. The request to demolish the plan and remove the brick structure is considered as a P D P under section nine two two point ten point E point two and shall be reviewed by the planning commissioner based on its decision based on criteria that are outlined below. Recommended motion. Based on the information in the application and analyze of the fact of record, the city planning staff recommends either denial of application D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty three dash O zero zero three seven O to demolish the existing three-story brick structure known as one one three three four Fifth Avenue without prejudice or a continuous of the hearing to allow for future community engagement and the consideration of alternative development plans. I return back to the applicant.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. I'm John Kamen. I'm attorney for the applicant. We have a brief slide deck that I want to walk you through, and I'd like to explain why we differ with city planning and also the public safety issues that that brought us here. So let me walk through the slide deck and then we'll deal a little bit with what we're asking for today. So first, briefly, the owner is an affiliate of Orbital Engineering. Orbital has been in Uptown since nineteen eighty-two. They have, you know, over a hundred employees at various aspects. This is their world headquarters. And we are very happy to have them as a member of Uptown. As you may know, having driven by Orbital's facility, they take care of their properties. They care about their properties. They care about their employees, and they're happy to be part of the Uptown community. The property address is thirteen thirty four Fifth Avenue. It is a lot area of fourteen hundred square feet. And on it is an existing three-story brick structure. Orbital's headquarters on this aerial view are on your right. And the building that we're talking about sits in the middle of Orbital's existing parking lots. So next slide is a street view that shows Orbital's headquarters on the corner. And the building that we're talking about demolishing is seen in on the left-hand side, you can see the deteriorating wall. So this is a closer-up version of the deteriorating wall, and you may wonder why would Orbital care about buying this piece of property that will deserve no purpose for them? Well, what you can see in the foreground are cones that we had to put up because pieces of the building were falling off onto our employees' cars and onto the traveling public. We went ahead and worked for years to try and get the owner of the property to appropriately remedy the situation because it created a safety hazard, not just for our employees, but also for the traveling public. You can see we have cones set up for the fall zone for bricks that come off the building whenever there's wind, weather, changing conditions, et cetera. And again, we don't allow anybody to park in that area. This is a picture of the other side. It's a little bit further away. The masonry from this shot doesn't appear to be as bad, but I can assure you that it is as bad. In addition to as we get closer up, you'll start to see some cracks and some issues that and some issues that make the building to be unstable. So one of the things that we did, so my client first hired Mini Field Demolition Services to prepare this application. Mini Field is a local uptown demolition contractor, and they started this process and ran into a little bit of a snag. We've been going through it now, I should say, we being Orbital, for over a year to try and get this situation rectified and the safety issues dealt with, which is why my D C P number is a twenty twenty-three number as opposed to a twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five number. This is a view of access to the property from Watson Street. We'll come back to this and why this makes sense in a second. So one of the things that came up as we were looking to quickly alleviate the safety issue was the concern that we could not go ahead and have parking which fronted on Fifth Avenue pursuant to the zoning code. Again, this is a little bit of an expedited application because we are very concerned about the safety associated with this building. So what we did as we were working through the community process in the Uptown Neighborhood, and I would say that we have been to multiple meetings and actually received a score of eighty-four and a B-plus recommend, or excuse me, a B recommendation from them for the demolition aspect. One of the concerns originally raised by D C P with this was, well, you can't have a parking lot that fronts on Fifth Avenue. So we prepared a consolidation plan that created essentially a landscape buffer that runs along Fifth Avenue so that this lot would not front on Fifth Avenue. I talked to you about Watson Street in just the slide before. The reason for me showing you Watson Street is we have agreed that all traffic will access this parking lot through Watson Street. There will be no direct access. In fact, we're going to vacate what we have for this on Fifth Avenue. This is, again, a little bit of a bigger picture that shows the area to be fenced during demolition and secured by the contractor. And let me go back to this slide here. So we appear to be hung up on the issue of statement of future use. And the problem with the way that the code is written in this particular situation is it requires us to invent a use when we have no idea what that use is going to be. So in conversations and emails that we've had with D C P, our position on this is because of the emergent need of getting this structure down. And by the way, in the community meetings, we heard complaints about falling brick. We heard complaints about rodent infestation. We heard complaints about safety. We heard complaints about a number of concerns that the neighborhood has had with this structure since before my client purchased it, and they were thrilled that we had gone ahead and taken the necessary steps to purchase the structure so we could rip it down. So I thought the compromise that we had worked out with D C P is that we would knock it down. We would leave the lot as gravel. We would not use it as a parking lot. Well, we went ahead and pursued our future use discussions. We're not, we don't know what this wants to be, and in fact, we disagree with city planning that any variance is necessary because of the fact that it does not front on Fifth Avenue, and that's what the code says, that the lot would have to front on Fifth Avenue where you can't have parking. But the thought was is that we would bifurcate this application. We'll knock, we need to knock down the building. It is emergent in nature. And then we will, you know, gravel it, restore the lot. We will not use the lot as we proceed through either an appeal, protest appeal of city planning's decision, or work through what this has to be. Right now, the way that these lots stack up, we do have a nice plan that could lend itself to development. But the reality is, is on an interim, and you look at this, we own all the way down to the billboards there. So you can see if this lot is removed, we have a nice lot, but we really don't know what we want to do with this yet. We don't know what's necessarily feasible. We, as we discussed with the community groups in our multiple meetings up there, this process of sort of visioning and thinking about what this will be will be probably a multi-year process. And as you know, with financing and construction and everything else that's going on, it's going to take a lot of time and a lot of community process to figure out what's there. So our understanding is that we have bifurcated this application to just deal with the demolition now. We'll agree not to use the lot until we have, you know, the portion of the lot that I should say that we're, that's going to be created by the demoing. We agreed not to use that to screen it off while we go through this process, but we can't allow a visioning process that's going to take a year or more by the time you get through the community groups and get through the process and demonstrating what's feasible to stand in the way of public safety. So what we're asking for right now from Planning Commission is essentially that you would go ahead and authorize the demolition of the structure with the understanding that the footprint of the property will not be used until one of two things happen. Either we go ahead and secure approval from the city for a future development plan, or we go to the zoning board and work through an appeal of the decision by D C P as to whether or not it's appropriate to use a parking lot. Either one of those processes will take a year or more, but the fact is, is that the situation is urgent that we deal with the building now. So I know I went through that relatively quickly. I would say that we did submit a statement of future use, and we could have said, we're going to use it for retail, or we're going to use it for apartments, or we're going to use it for office. But we just don't know, and our client's position and ours position is it's always better to be honest and transparent, and we've been honest and transparent with the community groups. We're inviting them into the process, but we're not going to sit here and make a misrepresentation to this commission about what we're looking to do. So what we're looking to do again is bifurcate this, allow us to knock it down. We've agreed to use, and this is why we got such a good score from the community groups. We've agreed to use minority contractors to knock it down. We've agreed to use minority pavers and line strippers to go ahead and you know, take care of it as we go through the process. These are people who we've known for years, who are in the Uptown community. And again, we just need to get this going, and we've waited long enough. So happy to answer questions. I'm also happy to go through specifically the nine twenty-two ten E two criteria, if that's what you'd like me to do right now, or if you'd like me to do it after I take some questions. It's up to you, Chairwoman Burton Falk.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation and for, you know, going through some extensive detail there. I'd like to open the floor for some public testimony. First, Commission, if you agree. And then, you know, we'll come back to the Commission for some questions and comment. Are there, is there anyone there? And I do apologize because I'm not in the room. Is there anyone there or online that wishes to speak regarding this application?
All right.
Looks like they're
Yeah, nobody in person is stepping up, but Uptown Partners. I've, you can unmute yourself. Can you please give your testimony?
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mikayla Scheckler. That's spelled M I K A Y L A. Scheckler spelled S C H E C K L E R. And I'm here today on behalf of Uptown Partners of Pittsburgh as the Real Estate and Development Program Manager. Just for reference, our office is located in one, in Uptown at one five one eight Forbes Avenue. I'm also here as a voice of the residents of Uptown, many of whom have felt unheard in this process. In twenty seventeen, the City of Pittsburgh adopted the Uptown Public Realm zoning code to protect our neighborhood from the kind of short-sighted development being proposed here today. Section nine oh eight point oh four of that zoning code prohibits demolition without a clear redevelopment plan. And the proposal for thirteen thirty-four Fifth Avenue clearly violates this. But this isn't just a technical violation. It's a breach of trust. The Eco Innovation District plan was created through years of community engagement to stop harmful patterns of demolition and disinvestment in the community. Approving this request would not only violate that zoning code, but also dismantle the vision so many of us have worked hard to build, a vibrant, mixed-use corridor grounded in equity and sustainability. At the Development Activities Meeting, and the fall, community members, myself included, clearly expressed our opposition, and it's deeply disappointing to see those voices dismissed. Uptown doesn't need more empty surface lots. We need intentional, forward-thinking development that supports our residents, our local businesses, and our long-term neighborhood goals. So on behalf of Uptown Partners, the Uptown Real Estate Design and Development Committee, and the Uptown Community, I strongly urge you to deny this demolition request today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there additional hands raised or folks that would like to give testimony? You're not seeing anyone else in person or online?
Nope.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Commissioners, you know, at this time, we have before us, if there are some questions that we'd like to ask the applicant or some discussion amongst us, what we do have before us today, based on the information in the application and some analysis, is we have two decisions that we have the ability, one or the other, not two. We can't make two decisions. You know, one or the other, but I'd like, before going through those, for any questions to be asked of the applicant. Commissioner O'Neill?
He online or in person?
Pardon? You kind of went out there for a moment, at least for myself.
Is Dr. Lehman available?
I am here.
Oh, great. How we ended up here and what the interpretation was regarding whether this application has to go to the Z B A. Could you just touch on that for us? And, you know, whether we take action today, whether this still would have to go to the Z B A in your interpretation as zoning code administrator?
Yeah, thank you. So the application that was presented and the presentations that were provided initially for this application did include a layout for a parking lot. And I raised concerns with the applicant that because the parking lot would likely need variances based on my interpretation of the code, and without a complete application to really do a full analysis of the application, I didn't want to have the commission risk any sort of vesting or any sort of even providing the impression as we've heard from the community, from their responses, concerns about the parking lot. The code provides a process for that kind of review. But if they would like to proceed to the Planning Commission, they could proceed to the Planning Commission with an application that shows, as Mr. Kamen showed, you know, just a gravel or you know, a vacant condition, understanding that we still have the process to go through. And so when we evaluated the application, preparing the staff report, we had to look at the Planning Commission review criteria. We had to look at the planned conformance letter and weigh all of those criteria together, and that's how we came to the staff recommendation. I will say, the concerns that I have regarding a potential application for parking lot, while Mr. Kamen and I have perhaps disagree a little bit on whether subdividing a five-foot median or sub parcel to create some buffering, which the code would require to screen a parking lot anyway, would constitute not having frontage and, you know, under the clear intent of the zoning code, it talks about both not allowing accessory parking on Forbes and Fifth Avenue in Uptown as part of the Eco Innovation Plan, but it also, and as part of that zoning, but also talks about looking at feasibility for alternatives to accessory parking and providing some reporting on that. So again, we would have to have a complete application. Further, the certificate of occupancy for the parking lot that's on the adjacent parcel that would be expanded to this site if there was a parking lot includes commercial parking for events, which at times throughout the history of that parking lot, there's been a substantial number of parking for events. That is a use that's not permitted in the zoning district, so an expansion of a nonconforming use would require a hearing by the zoning board. Finally, the Uptown Eco Innovation District has very strict parking maximums. And so without looking at what, if it was accessory only, without having a number of parking spaces and having the floor area, I can't say for certain that it wouldn't also need variances to that requirement as well. Thanks.
So, so let me just respond to two items. Corey and I have a disagreement about that, but that's why we agreed to bifurcate this approach and to just focus on the safety need that we have right now with the demolition. And with regard to the comments from Uptown Partners, I mean, we were just at a community meeting last week. We've been to over a half dozen meetings, and there's been this allegation of not engaging with the community is completely farcical. We have engaged, we will continue to engage, and we're being penalized for being honest. We don't know what we're going to do with it. We need to have a process to have that discussion. But right now, to turn a blind eye to what we think is a safety issue, which our employees have already had, you know, property damage, which the community went ahead and complained to us about that they can't have people walk on the streets, it seems to be very much short-sighted and also probably a reason why there's not so much happening. It is very difficult to go ahead and to develop under this existing code, which is fine. It is what it is. But to think that we can't go ahead and address a safety issue because we don't know what we're going to build there seems to be very, very, you know, counterintuitive. I would also note, our agreement to not use it when it's property that we own, our agreement to not use it is a reflection of our fact that we're going to be honest, transparent, and work with the community to get something go forward. With regard to what Corey said about the parking, we do have an existing certificate of occupancy for accessory parking there and for commercial parking during events. We are not looking to expand that in any way. We are not, this application does not expand that in any way. All that we're asking for is allow us to take a dangerous structure down, and we will be back to you before we build anything to go ahead and work through what the use is to be.
Vice Chair O'Neill, do you feel that some of your questions have been answered, and does that give way for additional questions for you?
I don't think I have additional questions at that time. I think where I'm at is that there is required to be, you know, a development plan. The Eco Innovation District, Uptown Public Realm has strict requirements for that, and again, surface parking or generally vacant lots. I'm not inclined personally to agree with this, where there are interpretations that suggest that there needs to be a more complete application or, you know, additional review before the zoning board, before this would move forward. It seems premature. And just to respond to a few points, I don't want to characterize what Uptown Partners said, but what I heard them say was they disagreed with what occurred at the community meetings, not that they didn't occur. You know, showing up isn't the same community sign-on. I guess two things. Honesty and transparency is the minimum. It's not something you should be necessarily lauded for. It's something we expect. So, you know, that should be the way things are moving forward, no matter what. And then I think finally, let me just look at my note here. I had another point, but I don't remember what it is. I'm sure it will come back to me. But at this time, it just seems premature. Oh, I'm sorry. My other point was this property was purchased at the end of twenty twenty-two. You know, to the extent there are safety concerns, I hasn't found it those, I mean, the building's been condemned, but, you know, it hasn't found it, it's so urgent demolition. You know, there are opportunities to shore up the structure, take other action, and those can be evaluated. It's not an excuse to, you know, allow this to move forward prematurely. I understand that safety is a concern, and I think there are things that can be done to address that. But to the extent there is a year-long process through the community, the building's been owned since December of 2022, and those opportunities were available. So I don't, you know, see the emergency now that requires action to circumvent the zoning board or, you know, take a different interpretation than what the zoning administrator has provided. So I would be recommending that this, you know, either be denied or, you know, continued for further action.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair O'Neill. Given, you know, your comments, I just want to make sure that commissioners, you know, understand what's before us here today. And prior to Vice Chair O'Neill's comments, there are some recommended motion options before us. And one of those would be to deny the application to demolish without prejudice. Or there could be a continuance of hearing so that, you know, further communication and engagement with the community could occur. I will say that I'm not sure that the community may have been saying that they weren't getting community meetings, but I think there might be some a bit of a potential miss, and they feel that there might have been more expectation by the community. Now, I, you know, I don't want to dive too deep into my own thoughts until commission has really had some chance to deliberate here, but I will say that there may not be a meeting of the minds with the applicant and necessarily the community. And I don't know that they have to come and meet in the same place, but that there, you know, may be an opportunity to have engagement where there might be some takeaways even for the applicant, where the applicant can have gone through a series of potential possibilities with the community, and then come back with the community feeling a little bit more engaged, not consensus, but engaged. Those are my preliminary thoughts. Commission, are there some additional comments? And let's have some dialogue. Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I have a few questions, both for Mr. Cayman and Mr. Lehman. So, Mr. Cayman, I believe Vice Chair O'Neill said the building was purchased in 2022, is that correct?
That's correct. We purchased it to rip it down.
And was there a business located on the ground floor at that time?
There was a pizza shop that had closed.
How long had it been closed?
I don't know the answer to it. Couple of years, right, Ashley? So I don't know the answer to it. It was closed, but they couldn't continue to operate the building.
And as far as the demolition, you mentioned gravel lots.
We're happy to landscape it, we're happy to put in grass, we're happy to put in whatever it needs to be, we're just trying to alleviate the situation.
Is the plan for the gravel lot to eventually be paved into parking?
For that, based on what Mr. Lehman and I have a disagreement about, the answer is maybe. If we have to go to the zoning board, it may not be worth it for us to do that. As we think about the larger plan, we honestly don't know. But if the commission would want it to be green space, we're happy to make it a grass lot. It's fine, we're not going to use it, which is part of the reason why we're proceeding, we just need to abate the nuisance.
And the property on the, I guess that's the west side of the the property in question, is that also owned by Orbital?
They're all owned by affiliates of Orbital. We own on both sides of it, which is why it was a problem for us. If we didn't own on both sides of it, we would not have purchased it.
And that property on the west side of the 1334, how long has that been owned by Orbital?
So I'm a little bit off on the east and west here. The one on the corner has been owned by the Orbital for over 40 years. And then the lots have been used essentially for accessory parking, with the exception of the COs that we have for event parking for Orbital's business. You know, they've been acquired over time, but I think we've owned them all for at least 20-plus years.
Okay. Mr. Lehman, I have a couple of questions for you. Is it your opinion that based on the Uptown Public Realm District, the general provisions, development standards, 908.04.c dot or dot, yeah, dot c dot two dot b, where it says, "Project development plans are filed for building demolitions. Not part of an application for new construction shall include a report, study, or statement of the property's future use that meets the review criteria of section 922 dot 10 dot e dot two." Are you of the opinion that if that is not provided in an application, that that would require a variance?
If the statement wasn't provided? Or the study, you know, the-
Yeah, the report, the study, or a statement of the property's future use.
Yeah, I think we would probably just request, I mean, I think generally, because that's sort of a criteria for the, for the commission's hearing, we would, as in this case, ask the applicant to make an effort to comply. And if we felt that it's for the commission to evaluate for the review criteria, and so I wouldn't, like, stop it from coming, send it to a variance because it might not meet one of the review criteria. That's, I would find that to be circular and probably not what the code intended. So I think we would, now, there might be, you know, if we had an application and we felt that there wasn't an effort to provide a statement about the future intent, then we would ask for that before it comes to planning commission. That's a determination in and of itself, and an applicant could appeal that as a protest appeal. So there would be due process either way. But I don't think that I would necessarily treat that in the same way that say, like, the number of stories is eight, and they're proposing nine. And so I would send them to a variance for the additional story, if that makes sense.
Yeah. That might, go ahead.
I also just want to, Mr. Cayman has had quite a bit to say since I spoke before, I just want to respond briefly. I haven't made any final determinations about any parking lot application because I don't have a parking lot application. So I can't say, is it a use variance? I can't say, is it a variance for accessory parking over the maximums? And I can't say, although I would say that, you know, the question of whether or not the frontage requirement can be skirted by providing a subdivision, my response already to the applicant has been that I wouldn't see that as sufficient to avoid a variance. But in that, we can debate.
Yeah. A second question for you, Mr. Lehman. So in terms of public safety, what would your take be? And is public safety a matter of concern for the planning commission or the Department of City Planning? And in evaluating appropriateness of development application?
Public safety is always a matter of concern. And I don't want to in any way convey not taking that seriously. The department, and I've spoken to the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections about this and other properties, where, and, you know, if you've been on the commission for a while, which you have, you know that there have been other applications that have come before where, both in Uptown and other places in the city, where the conditions of the buildings have deteriorated and deteriorated to the point where they do genuinely or allegedly present a significant risk to public safety. And there's questions about the responsibility, you know, whose responsibility is to, it is to maintain that public safety? Is it the property owner's responsibility? Is it the city's? Those are for a different forum. What I would say is that the the Department of, the Director of PLI and their staff have a responsibility to make evaluations as to the point which there is such a significant risk that they would write us a letter and ask us to, write me a letter as the zoning administrator, and ask us to waive our process. And so there are some structures which have had that process going to planning commission waived because of the risk to public safety. And my understanding is that this building's listed as condemned. It, I think it has a rating of two, which isn't the most extreme in terms of safety and risk. But those things, you know, with weather and other conditions, those things can escalate. Again, it's a question of both maintenance and a question of public safety.
Do you know what the dates of condemnation was?
I don't. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Wu's questions, a couple of things. We have been cited numerous times for this building by the city. We have gone to Magistrate Petit numerous times, and each time that we go to him, we tell him we have applied for a demolition permit and would like it taken down, at which point he promptly either continues or dismisses the citations. So it is not as if we are making this up. Again, we have been cited numerous times by the city, and the whole reason why we bought, we don't need any more parking. The whole reason why we bought it is because it's a safety issue. With regard to your other question that you asked, Mr. Lehman, I did want to make it clear that we did submit a statement of future use. It's part of your application. In that statement of future-
I stated the same.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that it was clear that we submitted a statement of future use and said that we essentially don't know what it's going to be yet, and if we were to use it as a parking, it would only be an interim use. But we've taken that off the table, so it's not as if the the strangeness of the way that this is written for this particular situation is you're asking my client to go ahead and prepare a full set of development plans for a development that they have no idea if they're going to build and no desire to build. So what you're saying is, let's spend an extra $40,000 to $50,000 on development plans for a structure that we have no idea if we're going to build or want to build for the charade of being able to check a box for getting a dangerous and unsafe structure remediated. So that's what is being asked, and that's why I have such a hard time grasping the fact that we can't bifurcate this application. We're not asking for any use from you right now. And as I said, you wanted it as grass, we'll leave it as grass. You want it as gravel, we'll leave it as gravel. You want us to fence it off? Fine, but at least let us abate the risk so we can go through this in a thoughtful process, which we'll take, by the way. We bought in '22, we made an application in early '23. I'm in '25, I still don't have the thing demolished, but I've been cited six times.
Mr. Cayman, I think those are some very good points. Were you done? I didn't want to just jump in there.
I am done. I was just addressing questions from Commissioner Wu. Happy to answer any other questions.
So there were some very good points there in those, you know, last few seconds. I thought that I heard you comment that you purchased, and when your client purchased, they purchased to demolish. Is that accurate?
That is 100% accurate.
Okay, and that was in 2022?
Yes.
And when they wanted to purchase in 2022 and demolish, they didn't have a plan at all then? Or maybe, you know, sort of, hey, this would be good for X? No?
The plan is, no, that we did not, because there was debris that fell on a number of our employees' cars during a storm, and they became concerned about the lack of safety, and our plan was just to abate the nuisance.
Okay, and I think that I heard you also mention that there had obviously been some dialogue with community as early as at least 2022, because you had mentioned that the community was happy knowing that you were going to acquire the property then at that time, right?
We actually had, recently had a meeting as part of the Hill CDC process where many groups came in and joined, and there was a gentleman who lived across the street. His name escapes me, but he said, please demolish the building, it is not safe. It is not safe for the people across the street, and I've seen rodents and everything coming out of it. We've had it abated several times, but they said, please get rid of the nuisance. So that's, when you talk about what the community wants, and again, I personally, or Tricia from my office has been through, have been through four meetings since we've been involved. So this is not something that's happening in a vacuum, but what the people who live closest to it have said to us is, please get rid of this, it is not safe.
Right, and that's kind of where my questions sort of begin. You know, the community from day one, when you went to purchase, or they had a desire for you to purchase and were happy about that, they knew then that the acquisition was being done for demolition. Is that accurate? Or would you see that was kind of, okay? And so through more of the recent meetings, I'm just taking a guess at this, it seems like there just might be a miss between demo, potentially, and the future plan. And the unknown of the future plan is what's making the community uncomfortable.
I think that's an accurate summary, but that's also why we've agreed to essentially leave it vacant. And again, if you want it grassed, we'll grass it, if you want it gravel, we'll grav it. Because we don't want the community to think, again, they've been there since '82, right? We don't want the community to think that we're walking through a process or trying to make something happen without going ahead and participating in them, which is why we agreed to bifurcate this process to abate the nuisance. But we will be back and we will participate as soon as we know what it wants to be, and that is a long process.
So I can understand why, you know, community, you know, given a plan and a desire to see the plan followed, it's been a little bit of a journey from '22 to 2025 in getting to some type of, you know, future plan. And they don't necessarily have a, in, based on the summary of what you're sharing and based on the summary of what was discussed in testimony, they haven't wrapped their arms around lack of full understanding. For me, I think I would like to see some additional engagement that looked a little more, not necessarily a workshop, but looked a little bit more like taking the community through sort of a, it could be this, it could be that. Again, not necessarily saying that there needed to be full-on consensus as it relates, but I think that where the community might be saying, hey, look, you might be being a little bit disingenuous because we've had, you know, three years of time, and now we're talking about another potential year of, you know, planning and process. And we don't have a commitment other than a vacant lot, even if it is grass or gravel or whatever that might look like. They might want a little bit more than that, right? And I'm feeling like maybe a continuance for some additional conversation around process and timing and how that engagement maybe looks might be helpful here. I'm open to hearing commissioners have comments around that. You know, I don't I don't necessarily want to see a flat-out denial. But I think that with a little more sewing and a continuance, we could get to at least some dialogue as it relates. And again, if we land in, you know, a similar spot, at least there has been a dial moved for additional understanding. Commission, are there are there some additional comments here? Some Commissioner Dick?
Yeah, I I would be very much in favor of the continuance in order to promote more interchange with the community as to the future use of this property.
This is, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Ruiz, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would I would say the same. I can I can understand the safety issues. I can understand the community concern. We often also have to realize that this is an area where there's a lot going on. There's a lot of development happening there, and I can see exactly why the residents could be concerned, especially when there's really no answer. We don't know. We don't know is not a good answer. And I think that maybe meeting with the community and community groups, it could help them come to 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 a better answer. Because again, you know, what development looks like for the people that are doing it is a little bit different from the ones that have to live in it. And so I I really think we should listen to our community voice here and and come back with something a little bit stronger.
Commissioners, are there some additional comments? For some reason, at least I am not seeing the commissioners in the room. Oh, probably because it's on Mr. Kamen. Okay, I get it. My apologies there. It's been a minute since I've been hybrid, so I'm I'm having some challenge. Regardless of that, I think that I think that there might be a little bit. Commissioner Wu, Commissioner Cantinia, did either one of you want to make a comment? I see Vice Chair O'Neill, you would like to say something more?
Um, I, yeah, I'll make a comment. So the, I guess, the statements of the future of the the property. I I think, you know, appreciate, you know, your honesty in terms of not knowing what you know, is going to be on that site. I I think, you know, one thing we might like to see is dialogue with the committee on some possibilities at least. No promises, obviously, but just, you know, some possibilities. And, you know, that that might you know, that that might just come across as a stronger application.
Yeah, then to that, yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Vice Chair.
Sorry about that, with the technology. I think I just piggybacking on that, I think if the the community has a little bit more of an understanding on what timeline looks like. Mr. Kamen, I'm sure you all have thought about what next steps are after demolition. I know you haven't decided, but if there's a little bit more of an estimate of, you know, what that planning process would look like and how long it would take, what steps might be taken, and like Commissioner Wu said, not necessarily a promise, but just a little bit more of an idea about what that planning process looks like moving forward. I think that would be more palatable and probably help everybody have a better understanding of next steps.
You know, and I'll make an additional comment here. You know, you you've done such good work and such good engagement around things like hiring for the demolition and engaging with the community around things that they would like to see. That's kind of what I mean about a, you know, workshop or a visioning. I'm not asking you to do all of that. But that could be done in sort of a mini, you know, version. If, you know, if this was a perfect world and you got to kind of put up what you wanted to put up, you know, community, what would that look like? And that may or may not be where you land, but if the community can be brought along just a visioning process and and a schedule that sort of looks like, okay, and you did a great job at at sharing that and conveying that today. Hey, you know, we've got to do this, and it's going to take us about a year, you know, to get through this process. I think it's more a level of reassurance. The group has been there for, you know, forty years on some of the real estate, maybe less on other pieces of the real estate. So commitment is clearly visible, right? They they want to be owners of the real estate there. And they're not alone. And maybe with the additional support, when the community feels a little more entrenched and and a little sort of deeper in understanding, I think that that can be better. You know, it's always good to kind of give folks information, share and have dialogue. Whatever you come out of that process with isn't a right or wrong answer, or isn't a right or wrong thing. But it's the activity and behavior that goes a long way on both sides, right? Them with you, so you're brokering short-term and long-term relationship, and and that's reciprocated. So I think that that's very important. And I don't want that step to be missed for you, your client or the community. And so, you know, if it's me and it sounds like I'm not alone, it sounds like we might be leaning commission more towards a continuance for some further engagement. And if there's any additional comment or motion on the floor as it relates, unless Mr. Kamen has any other comment, I'd like us to proceed.
Sure, I I do have one comment, which is, we're happy to do it. We were going to do it anyhow. So there's there's no issue with the engagement. I think our concern is really the safety issue. So if the board would continue it for, let's call it ninety days, that should be, you know, sufficient time for us to be back. We we want to make sure that particularly by the fall that this is down. It it will not go through another winter and be safe. So you know, I I just don't want the continuance, if granted, to be something that is done indefinitely, because, as I said, we're at the magistrate all the time. And this is not right. So that's what I would ask.
We appreciate that. And and based on, you know, your transparency and, you know, being genuine here, I don't think that that is an unrealistic expectation. I think in reciprocity, you know, the commission can certainly consider that timeline and, you know, have you back here by then. And and we thank you for having the desire to do that regardless of today's outcome. So thank you for that. Commission, having heard that, you know, last piece there, do we have a motion here today?
Just before I make a motion, Mr. Kamen, are you asking for, right now, we have a general motion to continue? Is there a timeline that you would prefer, you know, with come back within sixty days, forty-five days?
I I would like, I I think to do the plans. I mean, we'll want to actually have a process. If if we could do, call it, you know, no more than ninety, but I would think no sooner than sixty. It's going to just, you know, those meetings usually are just once a month. So I think if we can say somewhere between sixty and ninety days would be great for us to be back.
And my apologies, I was thinking ninety, given that's what he had laid out, so I I
I think I cut out there, so that I'm sorry about that. Yeah, so I think I would just motion for continuing to stay to ninety days.
Thank you so much.
Apologies, commissioners for interrupting. Looking at the calendar, unless my math is wrong, I think ninety days puts us right in August recess. So maybe if you just want to use prior to recess as a as a date.
Sure. A motion to
Is that prior to recess? Is that okay, Mr. Kamen?
That's great. Thank you.
Second.
All right, so I'm going to do roll call. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cantinia.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
And just clarifying, we have voted on a continuance, and that would be just prior to August recess.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your day. All right, I am going to move to the next agenda item under Hearing and Action, and that is as follows. Agenda item number two, DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 four nine, Forbes Avenue. This is to amend Duquesne University's Institutional Master Plan, IMP, in the Bluff, and presenting that this afternoon is Ms. Tandon.
And before she starts, I will be recusing on this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is the hearing report for Duquesne University Institutional Master Plan Amendment. The application number is DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 four nine. A request for an amendment to the Institutional Master Plan was submitted by Duquesne University for its campus in the Bluff neighborhood. The current IMP covering the period twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one was approved in January twenty twenty-two. Since that time, the university has completed several key projects included in the original plan. The final placement of these developments has created the need to relocate one of the previously proposed buildings. This amendment specifically proposes relocating the mixed-use academic building to the southwest corner of Forbes Avenue and Maggie Street, across the street from its original location. This revised location will serve as the future site of the new Rango School of Health Sciences. The change has resulted in a revised site plan with revised parking spaces, stormwater, stormwater management strategies, and landscape design. Specifically, the updated IMP includes the following broad changes. Revised language reflecting completed projects since January twenty twenty-two. Updated tables and figures to account for new buildings and overall capacity. A revised site plan showing both completed buildings and the new proposed location for the mixed-use academic building. Updated traffic analysis consisted with DOMI's BRT signage plans and refreshed graphics and data for tree inventory, stormwater management, and open space. These proposed changes have been reviewed by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, DOMI, the city's design review team, and the stormwater management team. A development activities meeting was held on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five with representation from Uptown Partners, Hill District Consensus Group, Hill District Collaborative, and Hill this Hill CDC. A copy of the dam report was attached to the hearing report. Property owners within one fifty feet of the proposed master plan area were notified of the proposed amendment, and onsite notices were posted in accordance with section nine twenty-two dot zero one dot C of the zoning code. Per section nine twenty-two dot twelve dot D, the Planning Commission shall recommend to City Council to approve, approve with conditions, approve in part, deny, or deny in part the application for the IMP. The recommended motion from the City Planning Department is that the Planning Commission of the City of Pittsburgh makes a positive recommendation to City Council on the Institutional Master Plan Amendment, DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 four nine, as submitted by Duquesne University with the following condition. That the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure approve the traffic impact study, which must be submitted with the building development application for the proposed mixed-use building prior to the issuance of the Record of Zoning Approval. Can now have the applicant.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Joe Additore with AEWORX, an architect, and today we're just going to talk about the Institutional Master Plan. Very good summary. So on, I'm here on behalf of the client, Duquesne University. There's some other design consultants that focused on civil engineering, transportation, and landscape architecture. So AEWORX focused on architecture and planning in the context of the IMP. And this is just for an amendment to what has already been approved, the twenty twenty-one, twenty thirty-one. So we just have a short presentation of some reference imagery. This is already a part of the EMI district. It's an aerial view cover of the IMP. So this was the graphic that was produced in twenty twenty-one, or there shortly before that, which was approved. So those three red blocks at the top of the screen, all but one have been constructed. And so the purpose of this discussion is really just to bring you up to speed with what what has been constructed, the UPMC Cooper Field House, which is number one on the screen. Number two is the Ducomm College of Osteopathic Medicine. And number ten, which is the Residence Hall. And so the next slide shows the proposed amendment, which is project number three, needing to be relocated across the street from the north west corner to the southwest corner of Forbes and McGee, due to some design changes of project number ten, the Residence Hall. It was shifted slightly east to improve the daylighting for those residences, and that's primarily why we're here. And in the original master plan, which was approved, it was a mixed-use academic building. Since that time, the university has identified the proposed youth use to be further defined as the Rango School of Health Sciences. This is just an excerpt from the IMP as amended. The building has not been designed yet, but is estimated to be between eighty thousand and a hundred thousand gross square feet, between three and six stories, and meeting all the other strategic goals that are addressed in the IMP. This is just a brief summary of the parking. The proposed location is going to replace an existing surface lot, which will remove about forty-six parking spaces, but that's in line with zoning and BRT developments for this uptown neighborhood, the Bluff neighborhood. Additional context, just for your awareness, the Rango School of Health Sciences currently exists in a building, which we can describe on the next slide, but its proposed relocation would relocate nearly all the program from this existing building and other buildings on campus to one location. Existing building, just for reference, built nineteen ninety-two, had a previous life as the gym, and will be repurposed once the the new facility is relocated or constructed. This is the proposed relocation. You can see in the Google aerial view, the Residence Hall number ten, under construction, there's a little crane there. The the relocation is across the street, Lot One, as it's called, street view for your reference. Here's another view from the corner of McGee and Forbes. You can see the completed Cooper Field House. Beyond the site is the existing parking structure. Currently, another architecture firm is working with the university on space planning. So this is just a breakdown of the mixed-use academic building, the new Rango School of Health Sciences, and it's trending around eighty thousand square feet and five stories. And this image just shows roughly the massing on the site, still very much in the pre-design phase, but will address all the requirements of the IMP as approved. So really, why we're here today is to be considerate of the the pending design. This is just a conceptual rendering that was brought to the board's attention at the university and doesn't really reflect all the open space or green space that would be part of the 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 design. It's really just showing massing and materiality at this point at a conceptual level. And as far as the IMP, we're hoping to gain your approval today to ensure that the design schedule for this project does not stall out in PLI or in the zoning department or the actual construction and design of the building. The aspirations of the client are for this building to start design this summer and then be constructed and opened by the fall of twenty twenty-eight. Here is the Q and A slide, which shows the completed Residence Hall and then the College of Osteopathic Medicine. And you can see some open space that has been built and constructed. So I'll go back and just end with our request to relocate project number three from its proposed location back in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two across the street. Relocating that massing for future development. for future development. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Given that concludes your presentation. Uh, and this is up for hearing in action. We open the floor for any public testimony. Again, my apologies. I don't have eyes in the room. Uh, is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak regarding this application?
I'm not seeing anybody in the room. Uh, doesn't look like there's any hands raised online either.
All right. Uh, so no one in the room, no one online. Commissioners, are there any comments or, uh, motions from the commission?
Hi, hi. This is Commissioner Quintanilla. Uh, my one only comment is I wish that the building somehow wouldn't, would face more of the corner. You know, like more of the massing on the corner, you know, so that it becomes more of a presence, uh, because it is the one place of the building that is seen from many, many streets from, you know, from where the building is at, right? So it's kind of like terminating that view. Um, so I wish like, and I know that we're not talking about the design, we're just talking about the moving, but in, 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 in the future, in thinking about the massing of the building, if you could do that, I think that would be super helpful just to make it more of an impact in the urban, uh, setting.
Sure. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, hearing no other comments, do we have a motion from the floor to approve?
So move.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna do, uh, roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Commissioner O'Neill has recused. Uh, Commissioner Quintanilla.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you so much. And Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Um, the ayes have it. It is passed. Thank you so much and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the third item under the hearing and action agenda today. Uh, is BDA dash twenty twenty-five dash zero one nine eight two at nine oh one Liberty Avenue. This is interior and exterior renovations for change of use to multi-unit residential in the central business district. Presenting that this afternoon is Paul Concealer.
Thank you, Chair Bernthal.
Thank you.
So I think we're getting a little bit of an echo. Okay, I think we're good. Um, yes, this is an application for project development plan, BDA dash twenty twenty-five dash zero one ninety-two that was filed by Jennifer Sesniak on behalf of Beacon Development, the developer for interior and exterior alterations for a change of use to multi-unit residential. The application proposes both interior and exterior renovation alterations to two existing buildings that are located at nine oh one and nine oh three Liberty Avenue. Those are parcels nine and sixty-one and nine and sixty-two. Uh, these alterations are intended to convert a former office and warehouse buildings into fifty multi-unit residential dwellings. The proposed development intends to combine the two parcels, as well as the two buildings, into one building on a single consolidated lot. That lot consolidation was approved on February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we are in the, the Golden Triangle Subdistrict C, um, and all, uh, development, including demolitions in the Golden Triangle zoning districts, uh, are required to be reviewed and approved by Planning Commission as a PDP as per section nine ten dot oh one dot C dot one C. A development activities meeting was held virtually on April tenth, twenty twenty-five with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. Uh, a summary report of that DAM, uh, is attached to this report submitted to commissioners. The site is located within the Penn Liberty Local Historic District. A review and approval by the Historic Review Commission was required. HRC reviewed this application and granted a certificate of appropriateness at its May seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting. The decision from HRC is attached to this report. There are no requests to the zoning board of it, of adjustment for this case. There's no stormwater management required for review. No off-street parking, uh, is provided, and the applicant does comply with the off-street bicycle parking requirements of, of section nine fourteen dot oh five. The applicant is providing, is proposing no off-street loading space due to the existing building footprints covering the entire site. There was a memo submitted by the applicant seeking an exception, uh, per section nine fourteen dot eleven dot B dot two. And that, uh, exception was granted, given that it was determined that the applicant meets the standards of that section to be able to receive the exception. Uh, electric, electrical utility work is proposed as a part of the development, and that requires the removal of three existing street trees along, uh, Ninth Street. Uh, there's one, uh, tree being proposed, uh, to replace those that are being, uh, removed. Um, and the applicant is currently working with the Forestry Department to determine the best of course of action to replace those two other trees being removed. Uh, so I will get to that as a part of the appro, condition of approval. Um, so under section nine twenty-two dot ten dot E dot two, the planning commission shall review the playing, uh, the project development plan according to the criteria of this section that was submitted as a part of the report. Staff's recommended motion is to approve the project development plan on the application provided by Jennifer Sesniak on behalf of Beacon Development, the developer, with the condition that the applicant, uh, receive final approval from forestry for the replacement plan of the street trees and, uh, that final construction plans, including site plans, uh, be reviewed and approved by the, by the zoning administrator prior to receiving final zoning approval. And then with that, I'll hand it over to the applicant to be able to go through the presentation.
Uh, my name is Jennifer Sesniak.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak up. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Polite. I'm the senior vice president for development for Beacon Communities. Beacon is a mixed and, mixed income and affordable housing developer uh, with developments, eh, going on in eleven states and Washington DC. Uh, twenty thousand um, units developed and managed over a fifty-year period. Um, so that's the commercial part. Uh, this development is the second of the adaptive reuse developments we've taken on in the last, um, couple of years. Um, thank you for your support previously at First and Market. Um, this, these are, these two buildings, nine oh one, nine oh three, um, Liberty, um, present us the opportunity to create fifty affordable housing development, um, units, um, in the central business district, a mix of studios, ones and twos. Uh, we're gonna benefit people with incomes in the twenty, fifty, and eighty percent of the area median. Um, we're pursuing, um, support from the city, meaning the URA, the Housing Authority, so that we can underwrite the rents for those folks at twenty and fifty percent of their median income. And then, um, we're also in the process of securing, um, tax-exempt bond, um, allocation from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. Uh, once we've done that, we will get an automatic allocation of low-income housing tax credits. Um, we're also using the historic tax credit program since the building is a contributing asset. Um, and we'll be borrowing, um, amortizing it. So a complicated stack of financing, um, but that's the world, um, we work in to accomplish this sort of work. Um, we've brought along today, um, PWWG to explain, um, our progress to date and, um, help others to understand what we've already envisioned. So Jennifer, you want to take the baton?
Yes, thanks, Michael.
You're welcome.
So, uh, as Michael sta, stated, our, uh, the two properties are located at the corner of Ninth and Liberty Street. Um, we already went through the zoning information. Here's a, a site plan. This, um, we, we just updated this this past week, but, um, when DLC got back to us about the transformer locations. So as you can see, the two transformer locations are gonna be along Ninth Street, which necessitated the removal of two existing street trees. Um, there's a third, um, street tree there that we're relocating uh, to the corner of Exchange Way and Liberty or Ninth, I'm sorry. And that, um, is so that we can provide a raised walkway for ADA access to the historical en, entry there along Ninth Street. There are two existing street trees along Liberty, which we will, um, maintain and keep during the process. You can see the locations of those transformers, uh, there. This allowed us to, um, not impact the traffic control, um, devices that are located at the corner. So this project is compo, composed of two existing historical buildings. The Renshaw Building, which is at the corner, this is the nine oh one building. It was constructed in nineteen oh eight. Eight full stories, and then it had a ninth story there added in the nineteen eighties. Um, this is all Roman brick, um, style brick worm with terracotta, um, uh, it decorations. You can see how the building turns the corner here at Ninth and Liberty. These are a few, um, images from along the streets there. The neighboring building, nine oh three, is the Kirkpatrick Building. It was built in eighteen eighty-four. It's an eight-story, and it runs, um, from Liberty th, through to Exchange Way. This is a, um, uh, wood-structured building, heavy timber-structured building, um, and has, um, you know, architectural detailing, um, on the first floor levels. These are some, uh, examples of, um, so you can just see how it appears today. Both of these buildings are currently, um, abandoned. There's, there's no occupied uses. So, um, just so you understand how it'll lay out, the existing historical entry for nine oh one is off of Ninth Street, which we're going to continue to use. So that's the historical entry towards the, the back. The community room, um, the community room will be along the frontage of both buildings so that we can maintain that retail storefront windows and activity along, uh, Liberty. Um, just for the understanding of the layouts, because we have, uh, the frontage along Ninth Street, we have, we've taken advantage of those windows to provide as many units as possible there. Nine oh three, we have units at the front and the back, um, taking advantage of the windows. Uh, new elevator core, um, egress stairs for ADA access, um, to the levels and a small roof terrace, um, for the, uh, building occupants. So, um, on, uh, re, the Renshaw Building, nine oh one, we're looking at exterior works of, uh, repointing, um, as necessary. Um, repointing with sky-facing joints, replacement of all the windows, none of which are historic. Uh, we'll be making structural repairs to the addition, uh, which will include parapet stabilization and window replacement, replacement of storefront windows at historic retail areas, um, and, um, uh, that raised walk, like I mentioned, at the historical entrance for ADA access. Uh, and along the back, we'll be replacing some louvers with new windows, um, and doing some masonry repair there as well. The Kirkpatrick Building gets a similar, um, facelift where this does get an elevator for ADA access to the building and egress stair, but we're also using that for the structural stabilization of both buildings. Um, which has been a key component of the project. We'll be doing exterior cleaning, repointing, um, and replacement of all the windows, uh, none of which were original. And, um, this building has some wood detailing, um, along the lower four stories, which will all be, um, you know, prepped, refinished in place and repainted, um, as well as some cast iron columns along the front, which will all get refinished. Um, and replacement of the storefront. That, the storefront was done in the nineteen nineties, um, uh, at this, that, at the Kirkpatrick Building. Uh, but the windows, um, will be replaced and will have two new egress doors from that location. The, um, fire escape, which is along the back of the Kirkpatrick Building, will be removed. Um, and some of the masonry openings that had been in field will be opened again and to allow for windows. Not going forward. Okay. Um, so this, these are our construction drawings. Uh, we're looking to submit to the city, um, next month uh, for our building permit. So we're looking to wrap up the zoning process. There is a small addition on the Kirk, uh, nine oh three side. This is the elevator overrun, egress stair that comes up. Um, and allows, uh, for some roof access. The terrace, um, has been, we've really dropped that, um, the structure of that down so that it's, uh, remains hidden behind the parapet and also pulled the back. Um, you'll see here, we pulled the terrace back, um, so that it's not visible from the street or coming down Seventh Avenue. There are only two historic images that we found, um, that we've been working through. Um, and so here are some renderings. So this is coming down Seventh, recognizing that one of the main, you know, um, exits into the city comes down Seventh, which you can see. Um, so, you know, the new addition for the egress tower and elevator override aren't visible. Um, neither is the roof terrace or, um, railings for that. You can see the new proposed painting, uh, new storefront windows. The finishes on both bit, with the both buildings are different so that they can keep their own identities, even though they'll be combined into one. Here you can see that singular street tree that we're proposing at the back here. Um, all aluminum windows, uh, throughout the buildings. Um, the, you can really see the paint palettes. Any of the additions at the top were really chosen to be neutral, to sort of go away in the general context. Um, and maintained the existing finishes, um, for the nine oh one building. Here, uh, you can see on that yellow, on the lower elevation where there's like a dotted line. So that's where we dropped the structure of the overall roof terrace so that all the structures that behind the existing parapets would step down, um, as, as it goes back towards Exchange Way. This section at the top there shows that even across Liberty, you're not, you're unable to be able to see that, uh, roof terrace uh, from the ground. So it just goes through the different types of windows, all aluminum, Quaker. They're all, uh, each six fifty series, which are acceptable by the, um, National Park Service for the historical tax credits. And, um, small-scale lighting, um, along the facades for safety, and then addition of lighting at the back at Exchange Way, um, for, you know, additional safety there as well. So we're, um, working our way through, um, our zoning process and hoping we'll be submitting for our building permits within the next month. Um, we'll finish up our National Park Service process, um, the state historic preservation process, and with the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, um, over the summer, and, um, we'll start construction in early twenty twenty-six, uh, with occupancy, uh, late third quarter, fall of twenty twenty-seven. This is really just to talk about the universal design. This was really just to talk about the universal design, which we talked really about most of this as we've gone through that. And you've covered all of our community process.
Okay, thank you. It looks like that concludes your presentation. And at this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone there in the room or online that would like to, to give testimony?
Doesn't appear to be anyone in the room and nobody online has their hand raised.
Okay, fantastic. Commissioners, are there any comments as it relates to this application? If Commissioner Dick?
Well, I would just like, I was gonna, I wanted to make a small comment and then a motion, but I'm just delighted to see more affordable housing coming to downtown Pittsburgh than I was glad is my heart. And if no one else has any comments, I would move that we support this motion.
Thank you so very much, Commissioner Dick. And Commissioner Dick has put a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
This Commissioner Reese, sorry.
I had a question. This is Commissioner Wu. This is not, you know, this just kind of curiosity question. So you have two buildings that are next to each other. I noticed that the, the levels of the buildings, the windows are not aligned. So is there like an elevator in the middle that goes to one side and the other? Or how's, how's that work?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. The levels don't align. We were not that lucky. So yes, the elevator is along the center wall of both buildings and opens into both sides. Oh, I, well, it's okay. But it opens into both sides. And those levels then are connected with an interior stair. So each floor level is offset by a number of feet, depending on what level it is. But shared use of like, you know, laundry rooms or whatever amenities are on that floor are open to both. And they're linked then with interior stairs and through the elevator, which would have stops at all of the independent levels.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Commissioner Quintanilla. So first of all, it's great to see two new, two buildings are going to be maintained and kept in downtown, which is awesome. It's great to see that. I had two comments and also kind of like a question for, for our zoning folks. The, the main corner, which normally that's like what I consider like the 100% corner, right? In terms of commercial and retail, you're putting a community amenity for, for the building itself, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Is there anything about commercial being on ground floor, some of these buildings, Corey?
Hi. Just a quick question about that.
Ask it again?
Oh, no, I was just asking because the ground floor for a lot of these buildings, right? That are, they have like such a significant storefront, especially one like in the corner, like this building is with huge presence on the street. It's not going to be converted into a community space. But normally that used to be commercial. Do we have anything on that when it comes to the zoning or?
Are you, you're asking if there's a code requirement that it, that it be commercial? I'd have to look to, to confirm. I, I think that in a lot of districts, we have requirements that they're activated. So community space would, would comply. The Golden Triangle is a little bit different, but yeah, I, without doing research. Yeah, if you have.
Paul Consil, Principal Planner. So there's, in the Golden Triangle, there's not, like as Corey mentioned, we have an active use, but there's not a requirement. There is a, a project will get a floor area bonus if there's a ground floor retail. So we incentivize it in the Golden Triangle, but given that this is an existing building, we don't have it as a requirement.
Okay, I see, I see. And I mean, it's great that you put in the community room there because at least hopefully it's going to be active. But it tends to be like one of those very important retail spaces that you want to have more commercial than anything else. But I mean, fact that you're saving the building is a big deal, of course.
I was going to say with these two little sliver buildings, we have to make use of every like square inch that we have available. And a community room is a necessity as part of our affordable housing. And so it'll get a lot of use through the 50 units within the building.
Right. And then my only last question is the outdoor lighting. If it's possible that you guys be reconsider and having either something that might be, because I don't know what the luminance is, but I imagine by the size of the light, it's not going to be something that's going to be very bright, which on a downtown sidewalk, you do want to have more lighting, especially pointing down. I don't know if that's something you guys have thought about?
Yeah, I mean, we have an electrical engineer that looks at all of that and, you know, we'll have to meet the safety levels at the ground. And then we need to balance that though with the residential use and the fact that we do have a unit at the lower level at the back of the building. And so we'll be, you know, there'll be potentially brighter lighting near like the loading area, like where the trash will come out. But we have to be, you know, we're, all of the lighting will be facing down. So we're night sky compliant. But it will be to, you know, code standards.
Okay. It's just, I'm more concerned about the sidewalk on the front of the building to make that feel more alive, you know? And normally light does that. It's a really good way of doing it. It makes the space, the place feel more safe, you know? And since you guys are doing this great renovation, it would be nice if there was a maybe consideration for maybe a little bit, something lighter, brighter, that could potentially light up the sidewalk well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners. Does that conclude? Any questions or comments? We had a motion from the floor. Did we have a second?
Second.
That was me. Oh, good.
All right. And I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
Epstein.
All right, Commissioner Quintanilla?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much.
The motion passes, so you are free to have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Likewise. All right, now we are moving on to the final agenda item under Agenda Item D, Hearing and Action, and that is as follows. BDA-2025-03473 at 500 Ross Street. This is install business identification high wall signs in the Central Business District. Presenting is Mr. Fraker.
Before Mr. Fraker starts, I will be recusing on this item. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Project Development Plan Application BDA 2025-03473 was filed by Colano Design on behalf of Mellon Bank, property owner, for three high wall, high wall signs. Per Section 919.03.m.m.c., signs over 40 feet above grade are subject to planning commissioner view. There are three existing high wall signs that are slightly smaller than the new proposed signs. The existing high wall signs are approximately 43 feet by 11. The proposed signs are roughly 56 by 12 feet and will be located on the Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue and Ross Street facades. The signs will be between 208 feet and 219 feet above grade. The applicant has indicated that the signs will be for the name of the business, BNY Mellon. This is in compliance with the code, which states that only the name of the building or business shall be mounted higher than 40 feet above grade. A development activities meeting was held with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. The Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership has waived the 30-day post-DIM requirement to enable this application to be reviewed at the, at this hearing per the applicant's request. A copy of that letter, as well as the DIM report, is attached to your materials. With that, the recommended motion is that the Planning Commission of the City of Pittsburgh approves the project development plan, BDA 2025-03473, with the condition that the final construction plans, including site plans and elevations, shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing their acutative zoning approval. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bill Colano here for BNY. On the screen right now is the new logo that is unveiled, replacing the former BNY Mellon logo. And we're here largely today in order to have a great impact of this new logo. It's a bit more vertical than the stretched-out horizontal BNY Mellon. And let me progress. Whoops, too fast. Little housekeeping. As you mentioned, we're GTB Golden Triangle and it is a variety of different parcels that are assembled for this building. And if we're approaching the building from the Liberty Bridge, look for the red dotted box. We have three different views, a little bit farther away to closer. And the existing BNY Mellon with its corresponding logo mark arrow is in the upper right corner of the top of the building. Coming from the other direction, the Veterans Bridge area. Three photos again. Getting closer, you can see a shadow of the former horizontal BNY Mellon. Looking at the red dotted boxes, that's where the location is remaining. And lastly, we have the elevation that faces Grant Street and Ross Street. And the logo previously was within left to right, the brick panel that is demarked by the red box. Elevation, Liberty Avenue facing, the arrow mark with BNY. Our code gives us a 2% or 1,500 square foot sign maximum. The sign proposed is 672. And by day, it will appear in brand colors, a teal and a super dark navy. And it will have a day/night perforated film on it and turn white at night. Opposite facade, same size logo, flush left on the building. Day and night, dark and light. Third elevation, exactly the same size, 672 facing Ross Street. Day and night. The letters will have color-changing capability to be red for Valentine's Day and green for St. Patrick's Day if they so choose. We have a super clean detail on the sign. It is a faceless trim on the front to keep the letter forms very crisp. There is a letter of luminance on file that it will be 2,500 nits by day, 250 nits by night. And lastly, this is using a green light technology, where if you imagine yourself at the sign face, projecting a green light out into the surrounding area, everything that is colored green is what will be able to see the sign back. And so we have our three directions and we have about a 5,000-foot readability. That's my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this application?
There is nobody here in person and there's no hands raised online.
Thank you so much. So Commissioners, are there any comments or questions as it relates? If none, do we have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. With a motion from Commissioner Wu, a second from Commissioner Dick. I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill has recused. Commissioner Quintanilla?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you. It passes. Have a great rest of your day and enjoy that beautiful weather outside.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to the final item under Agenda Item under our Agenda for today, which is the Director's Report. And I'll defer to Mr. Lehman to update us on anything.
Hi, Commissioner. On behalf of all directors and assistant and deputy there, they're like, there is no Director's Report this week.
Why, thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Okay, so Commissioners, we hear no Director's Report. That means we are at the end of our day. Thank you for your service, you wonderful Commissioners and staff and folks that have come out to join us today. We are going to take a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, go in peace. Good people. Have a great day.